Way Township Planning Board will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News, notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available, their clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger. Ms. Buckley, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran? Ms. Saunders? Reverend Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Putting in progress.
Here. Uh, can we all face the, uh, flag over my right shoulder and recycle pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The, are there any adjustments, amendments to the tonight's agenda, Mr. Barlow?
Madam Chair, number ten, which is a discussion on the properties on Brook, Clausen and Field Avenue as to whether or not they're an area in need of redevelopment has been postponed until the August ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting. And number fourteen, twenty-three PB fifteen slash sixteen V, the thirty Duke Road Transfer Warehouse has been postponed to August ninth, twenty twenty-three, and the applicant will renotice. So if anyone's here for those two matters, um, they'll be heard.
What was the first matter you mentioned?
Number ten.
Okay. All right.
They'll both be heard at the August ninth meeting at this juncture.
Thank you. All right, um. Can we have the professionals sworn in?
Hey, my camera has failed, but I will swear in.
Would you like me to do that, or will the attorney do that?
Um. The secretary is trying to do it, but I don't think her sound is working.
Okay, well, at least my sounds. At least my sound's working.
Ron, if you could state your name.
Uh, Ronald Reinerston, uh, CME and Associates, a professional planner. Uh, to the board.
You swear your testimony before the board this evening will be the whole truth, so if you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. May I have a motion from the board to pay any duly audited bills for the month?
Madam Chair, uh, I make motion to pay the bills.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Kenny. Uh, do I have a second?
Don Corcoran will second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of revolution, resolution to memorialize action taken at the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, there was none, no meeting?
Uh, correct, there are no resolutions from that meeting.
And we can withdraw that. Uh, item number nine, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of June fourteen. Well, there was no maintenance then.
No, there were minutes.
There were minutes? Wait a minute, I do have that. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the amendment?
Don Corcoran will make that motion.
Thank you. Second, please. Thank you. Roll call. Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Foster.
Mr. Atkins, thank.
Boston.
Mm-hmm. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Item, item number ten has been adjourned until the August ninth meeting. Uh, item number eleven, discussion, extension of time for twenty-two PB twenty, twenty-one V as in Victor Splendor Homes, New Jersey LLC, seventeen sixty-two and seventeen fifty-eight South Second Street.
Yes, Madam.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Morse was the applicant's attorney. Uh, the board may recall, this was a two lot subdivision that required the applicant to purchase a piece of property from the township. Um, because of the pr- the procedures that are required whenever the municipality sells land, that process took a little bit of time through no one's fault. Um, and that's been completed. Mr. Morse wrote on July seventh, twenty twenty-three, asking for an additional six months to perfect the subdivision because the time would run on July twentieth, twenty twenty-three. He fully believes he'll be able to, to get that done beforehand, but has requested an additional six months um, from the board, and there's really no reason not to extend that courtesy to Mr. Morse.
Hearing no objection, um, we that will be adjourned for six months.
Well, um, we just need a motion and, uh, and there's also a resolution that needs to be adopted, Madam Chair.
Okay, can I get a motion from the membership, someone in the membership?
Uh, I make a motion, Reverend Kenny, that we accept the six months.
Do I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buckley.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Then Ms. Saunders should have a resolution that we can memorialize this evening because if we wait until next month's meeting, the time will have passed.
Hey, give me one second. Sorry, I had to get back in. Okay.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chairman, I'd like to, um, make a, um, memorialize a resolution for Splendor Homes, New Jersey LLC, application twenty-two PB zero-four slash zero-five B for an extension of time.
Do I have a second?
A second, Mr. Atkins.
You roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran? Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number twelve, discussion IPT Kingsbridge Business Center, urban renewal, seek relief to from previously approved condition.
Madam, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, the, the board may recall, this was a, an application where Ms. Jennings from the Lenz Farm um, represented IPT Kingsbridge Business Center. The board, um, granted, um, the application. And if you may recall, it was a warehouse where there were going to be five thousand square feet of office space to two thousand five hundred square foot offices. The applicant, um, as going through the process, submitted plans to make one of the offices two thousand five hundred eighteen feet. And because of the condition in the resolution, um, the township's professionals had to deny um, the request for the, for the building permit. Um, so the, the applicant is seeking to remove the condition that the two offices have to be equally two thousand five hundred square feet. I know Ms. Jennings spoke at length with Mr. Clarkin, the Assistant Township Attorney. Um, he had no objection and he thought it was appropriate for the applicant to just seek a modification of the condition that the two offices had to be exactly twenty-five hundred square feet. The board, um, there's not going to be a change in the overall square footage of the office space being five thousand. It will still be five thousand square feet as the board approved. It's just a question of if they have to divide it up, whether it's twenty-five eighteen and twenty-four eighty-two or twenty-four hundred and twenty-six hundred, it'll still be five thousand square feet. I know Ms. Corcoran has been in involved in those discussions also. And again, I don't believe Mr. Clarkin or, uh, Ms. Corcoran had any objection to that. Um, and I can understand from the applicant's point of view, somebody might need a couple more feet on one and a couple less feet. So they're just seeking um, the board's approval to modify the condition that the two office spaces don't have to be twenty-five hundred square feet each. Did I summarize that, Ms. Corcoran?
It was perfect.
Okay. So if, if the board's inclined to do so, there would be a motion to just modify that one condition that the two office spaces don't have to be two thousand five hundred square feet. Um, and then I'll do a resolution for next month's meeting, if that's the board's pleasure.
Um, can I get a motion from the board indicating, uh, whether this modification uh, is, is, uh, agree, is, is a, is agreeable to you, to the board? Without objection.
Madam Chair, Don Corcoran will make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Just give me a second.
Uh, Ms. Saunders, I hear you. It's a second. Could you roll, call the roll, Ms. Buckley, please?
Mayor Waller?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number thirteen, twenty-three PB oh-nine slash ten V as in Victor fourteen oh-seven Stelton Road.
Uh, good evening, members of the board, uh, board professionals. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hello, uh, my name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney, uh, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm here representing um, uh, fourteen oh-seven, uh, Stelton Road. Um, this is, uh, a current car wash that's on Stelton Road. Um, I don't know how long it's been there, but it's, I believe it's been there for as long as I've ever known Biscataway. Um, that car wash has been there and, um, it was recently purchased by my client in, uh, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, he wants to do some, uh, uh, give it a facelift, modernize it, update it, um, basically, you know, bring it into the, into the twenty-first century. And, uh, and that's why we're here tonight. We're looking for a, um, uh, second story, uh, addition in order to, uh, put, uh, some new facade signs on. Uh, it is going to require, um, some new variances, actually really only one new variance. Um, all the other ones are, are essentially existing, but I'll go over those. It's, um, we are proposing three facade signs where only one is permitted in the zone. There is a freestanding sign that is currently there and existing. We're going to keep that freestanding sign. It is, um, thirty-three square feet in area and the permitted size is thirty-two square feet in area. So we're one square foot over on the size of the existing freestanding sign. And the setback is at thirteen feet from the street line where, uh, twenty-five is required. Uh, for parking, um, based on our calculations, we would need twenty-six parking spaces and we are proposing thirteen. Uh, I believe those spaces are already existing. Uh, although as we get into the, the comments, we'll see the striping isn't the best there and we are planning on restriping and re-designating those parking spaces. Um, so those, that's the variance relief that we are requesting, uh, tonight. Um, I do have a couple staff reports, just for the record. I have Mr. Hinterstein's memo of June twenty-eighth. I have, uh, Mr. Ryerson's, uh, CME review letter of July fifth. Uh, I have Ms. Corcoran's, um, completeness, uh, review, and then I have a fire approval uh, letter as well. Is there anything that I'm, uh, missing for the record? Dawn is shaking her head, so, uh, no, so I don't believe I'm missing.
Not that I'm aware of.
Excellent. Um, I do have a, a couple witnesses tonight. I do want to, just in, uh, terms of, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, my computer's doing something stupid. Apologies for that. Uh, I do have a couple witnesses tonight. I have, uh, Mr. Mario Mendoza. He's, uh, the, uh, the owner of the property and our representative. He's going to be first. Then I have our engineer, Mr. Rob Murray. I have our architect, uh, Mr. Brian Taylor, and then I have our planner, John Dupont. Um, without any ado, uh, I'm ready to call my first witness unless there's any, um, housekeeping matters that I have to discuss first.
Mr. Barlow?
No, Mr. Arch, I would just note for the record that, uh, the notices were, uh, acceptable.
Thank you.
Let me call your witness.
Uh, Mr. Mendoza, if you can please unmute your, uh, your mic and, uh, let yourself be known.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry. How you doing?
Fine. Uh, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record?
Mario Mendoza.
Thank you.
Uh, so Mr. Mendoza, you are in fact the owner of the property, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, and you purchased that in, uh, um, Mar- uh, like April, I think of twenty twenty-two, is that correct?
Yeah, April of twenty-two was the closing.
Okay. Um, and you have, can just briefly tell us what your experiences with car washes are? Do you own any other car washes?
I do. I actually got into the business in ninety-six. Uh, I own and operate three, uh, locations at this time. And I've, uh, owned approximately about eight through the years.
Okay. Uh, and was I accurate in the beginning when I said that, that part of this application is to uh, revitalize, modernize, kind of give the, the site a facelift? Is that correct?
Definitely, yes.
Okay. Um, and based on your knowledge of the site, it hasn't really changed much in, uh, presumably decades since it's been there, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've had a car wash in South Plainfield for probably twenty years, and I think it's, that one's looked the same for about twenty years.
Yep. Um, so, uh, I'm going to ask you a, a couple questions sort of about the operation. At any given time on the site, how many employees do you have, uh, working there?
The site like this normally has around three employees full-time. Uh, on the weekends, we might have an extra one uh, to four. I mean, the max would be five, uh, three full and two part-time on a busy weekend, kind of act after like a snowstorm and, you know, the days that we're, we get a little busier.
Okay.
The three full, so, full-time.
And in your experience, do, do each of those employees drive a separate car or do they carpool to work or get dropped off?
No, no, mostly they carpool.
Okay. Uh, so each of those employees doesn't, uh, require a, a designated parking space for each of them, correct?
No, like right now, we have, I think, two cars on site with the part-timers. Like on a, on a Saturday, you'll see the, you know, my manager has his car and then he brings a couple guys with him.
Okay. So, so one of the variances that we're asking for is, uh, thirteen, is to provide thirteen parking spaces on site as opposed to twenty-six. In your experience as a, uh, as an owner of a car wash and in operating this car wash in particular, is that more than adequate to accommodate, uh, the customers and the employees, uh, uh, on that site?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Uh, and just car washes in general, they're not a, uh, the type of business where, um, people come in, park, stay for a long period of time. They're a quick turnover business. Is that, would that be accurate to describe?
Yeah, people drive in and pretty much drive out, you know, they'll park, they'll vacuum, but they're not staying, you know, for a long period of time.
And actually, a good majority of your customers don't even park at all. They go through, go through the car wash and exit the site completely, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So signage is also, uh, something that we're asking for in this. Uh, so let's talk about that a little bit. In terms of the business of a car wash, is signage and visibility an important aspect of that business?
Yeah, it's huge because, you know, people driving down the street, you know, the car wash is something that's kind of like an impulse, you know? Um, you know, reaction to get the car washed if it's a nice day out or the weather's permitting. So obviously the, the, the more signs that we can, you know, show them, you know, a, a good ways before they get to our location, uh, that, that helps, uh, helps a lot and also helps them from, you know, slamming on their brakes when they're, you know, passing it or, you know, because they, they couldn't see the signage.
Okay, so not just from a, from a business perspective from you to attract business, but also so that people that are driving down Stelton Road have adequate time to, to change lanes if they want to go in or to, or, uh, slow down so that they can make the turn into the lot, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, directing your attention, uh, to CME's, uh, reports, Mr. Ryerson's report, there were a couple questions in there that I just wanted to highlight, uh, to get your, uh, uh, get your feedback on. Um, one of those was to confirm the nature of the Pegasus devices. Can you just briefly tell us, uh, uh, describe what these Pegasus pay stations are and how they work?
So the pay stations is basically a, um, it's like an automated cashier, uh, for the car wash industry where the customers can basically just pull up, you know, choose their service, they can pay for the service at, at the machine. Um, it has a gate, the gate goes up once they pay, and then they can pull into the wash, uh, and get their, get the, get their service.
Okay, and the other, the other kind, I think, uh, that, that it was mentioned was LPR, but that's not the, the type of pay station that we're using, right? That's a license place, plate reader station?
Yeah, so unfortunately the manufacturer that we use, when I asked them for diagrams and stuff, they have like the full-blown, you know, all bells and whistles, which one of the, the, one of them is the LPR reader, which is a license plate reader. Um, and that's for other, you know, membership type of things, but they don't really work good in the Northeast, but we, we won't be using them, no.
Okay, and, uh, and on, on the note about the pay station, if somebody were to enter to get a car wash, drive to the pay station and some, for some reason decide that they didn't want to get a car wash, are they able to select an option of no car wash to exit the site and, and, and not disrupt circulation of the site?
Yes, and also my guys, uh, for example, my, my entrance attendance will have the ability to, if they see somebody struggling or if they do not notice that they need them to, to, you know, to go pull out, they can auto, they can also automatically open it from, from their station. Or they can walk out and do the same thing at the, at the base station.
So they can actually remotely help the circulation of the site?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I think there was one other comment in Mr. Ryerson's report. He was asking if we, or I think one, one of the comments was, uh, uh, restriping and redelineating the parking lot. We're agreeing that we're going to do that as, as part of this approval if we do get approved, correct?
Yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
Okay. Uh, and also I believe Mr. Ryerson had indicated, uh, had we contemplated the potential of putting in an EV charging station. Um, and that's something that we had talked about, but, uh, is it fair to say that given the nature of the business, the fact that it is a, a transactional business where there's a high turnover of cars that a, a charging station really doesn't make sense because that's really the antithesis of what the business model is?
Yeah, you and I spoke about it in, in depth. It just, it, I think it's in this, in this scenario, it just, we're not looking for people to stay, uh, stay a while, if that makes any sense. You know, we're, we're in and out, it's an exterior-only car wash with vacuums. So I just don't, I, I personally don't think that it would, you know, it would make sense at this, you know, this type of business.
Right, and based on the amount of time that it takes for a lot of cars to charge, it makes sense on maybe a restaurant or a hotel or someplace where you're going to be staying for an extended period of time. But in an area like this where you're coming in for, you know, a couple minutes, doesn't make sense to have a charger, um, on site, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think our average vacuum time is around seven minutes.
Okay. Um, I'm going to draw your attention then to, we have Mr. Hinterstein's memo, and I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as I can. Um, his first comment was about the proposed signage that we showed, and we'll get into that more when we get to our architect. Um, but, um, uh, he was asking if we could reduce the two, uh, facade, side facade signs. Um, and can you just confirm, we actually will be showing on an exhibit, we did reduce this down in coordination with Mr. Hinterstein, where he, he, we actually asked him to what size he would like us to uh, reduce it down to, and that we followed his directions, uh, and did that. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, and, and there's, uh, uh, well, we'll get into it more when we get to the architecture, but there's a couple other, uh, um, tweaks as to the, uh, the signage, uh, in order to cut down on sort of the redundancy that he was pointing out in his comment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, point number two, he indicates that there's another sign that exists at the, at the rear of the property, but no, uh, dimensions are given. And we indicated that on our plan that there was some covered signage, but that's been removed, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's been removed.
Okay, so that was just something that had been there previously. It, it was removed before the application.
Yeah, I didn't even really know what, what it was doing. It was, it looked like a large birdhouse, to be honest with you, so I just took it down and landscaped around it.
Excellent. Okay, um, three and four are both about, uh, dedicating the necessary right-of-way and doing a temporary construction easement. You actually had told me that you were already approached by the town with the temporary construction easement documentation, I guess because they're about to be doing something on, uh, international. Um, and so you believe that, uh, that, that's already been signed. Uh, but if for some reason it hasn't been signed or it hasn't been effectuated, you have no problem, uh, agreeing to those conditions, correct?
Yeah, I already worked with the attorney that was handling that. I, I don't remember who it was, but, uh, yeah, I, I signed everything that they asked me to and sent it back, uh, a while ago.
Okay, but if for some reason it never got recorded, never got lost at some point, you have no problem re-executing something as a condition of this, if that's necessary, correct?
No problem at all.
Okay, so five is any broken or damaged curb along Stelton Road should be replaced. We have no issue with that comment, correct?
No issue.
Okay. Um, the existing freestanding sign needs to be landscaped. Uh, you had actually already landscaped it. Uh, it just wasn't reflected on the Google Street View that, uh, that we believe Mr. Hinterstein was looking at. And we provided him with pictures after this report, and I believe he indicated that he was satisfied with the landscaping, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we'll agree obviously to confirm that he's satisfied with it and provide any, any other documentation, but we're fine doing that, uh, condition. We believe it's already done.
Mr. Arch, so the applicant will work with Henry if there's any issues related to landscaping?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, seven, the existing lighting, um, where, uh, you've already contacted your electrician to make sure that the LED lighting that we have, the new LED lighting that was installed on site can be adjusted to meet the ordinance, is that correct?
Yeah, I did meet with them. It can be adjusted, um, and it will be. I'm just waiting to know exactly, you know, what angle it needs to be so I can give that information to the electrician. So you can come back and do that.
Uh, number eight, there's a fence located along, uh, there was a fence located along International Drive. He's asking us to reinstall that. We have no problem putting the fence in. However, you were just, uh, asking if international is going to be widened, uh, in the near future. We want to be able to coordinate so we're not putting up a fence, having it taken down and having it reinstalled again, is that correct?
Yeah, that, in fact, that fence was, was in pretty poor condition. It was cracked and broken in a lot of places. So we took it down with the intentions of putting a new one up, but, and in that timeframe is when I started getting the information from the attorneys about the construction easement, and that's kind of when I, when I stopped to, to see if we can, you know, if the town approves that we can put the fence up after they're done, so we're not doing it twice, if, if need be.
And Tim, if I may, this is Don Corcoran. Um, we do, I do believe we have those engineering plans in our office so we can certainly work with your client as to the correct location for the reinstallation of that fence.
Excellent, and just to coordinate on timing so that we're not taking everybody's.
Absolutely.
Uh, Madam, Madam Chair, if I can jump in on that, I, I.
Go ahead, ma'am.
The road is not being widened. The existing curb, the curb is going to be maintained. There will be a sidewalk. I believe if there's already a sidewalk out there, if there's not, then you're going to be required to put one in on International Avenue.
But, okay, but it would affect where the right-of-way is, where that, where that temporary easement is. And so we just need to make sure that the, that it's coordinated so that we're not causing more work for either the township or for us.
And, and counsel, as I may say, uh, I, I don't believe that they're going to finish up with the project before the end of the year. I think this will spill over uh, probably to the late spring of next year when they'll cap the road. So there, there'll be some time yet, okay?
Um, Mr. Mendoza, uh, number nine, uh, the rear of the property, they're asking, uh, Mr. Hinterstein's asking, particularly in the areas adjacent to residential homes, can that be buffered with a solid fence or a mix of landscaping? We're fine doing the buffer, but I believe that you had pointed out that there is existing landscaping um, that is quite mature back there already and fairly tall, and we just want to. And we just want to coordinate with Henry so that we're not potentially removing what is providing a nice buffer already with the existing landscaping. But can we suffice to say that we will work with Henry to find out, to figure out the best way to, to provide a buffer along that back area?
Yeah. And it goes back to the, I think the, the picture that he saw from Google Maps was kind of old, I guess, and, and that, that buffer is pretty mature. They're, you know, they're a good five, six feet tall. Um, and in order to put a, a fence along there, I think we would have to remove those. Um, and right now, I would like.
Was it fair to say though, as Mr. Barlow indicated, that we will work with Mr. Henry, with Mr. Interesting, work out what a appropriate landscaping buffer there would be?
Yes.
Um, number 10, street trees provided, we're fine agreeing with that, correct?
Yes.
Uh, and then 11 and 12, broken damaged pavement and curb and sidewalk should be replaced. We're fine with that as well, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I have no further direct questions of, uh, of Mr. Mendoza unless the board has any questions of him.
Members of the board, anyone having, uh, questions of this app, of this, uh, witness? Okay. Hearing no response. Uh, Ms. Buckley, would you check to see if there's any, I'll open it to the public and see if we have any questions of this witness from the public?
No one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. You may call your next witness.
Uh, my next witness is Mr. Rob Murray. He's our engineer, Mr. Murray.
Hey, how's it going?
Hello. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony of to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Robert Murray.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Murray, uh, can you, um, have you been in front of the, uh, planning board of Piscataway?
Yes, I have.
You've been accepted as an engineer before?
Yes.
And are your credentials, uh, the same or, uh, or better than, uh, or still in good standing from the last time that you were accepted?
My credentials are still in good standing. Yes.
Um.
Yes, he may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Murray, if you can, just briefly give us a, an overview of the site and sort of touch upon what we're doing, uh, for the benefit of the, uh, of the board.
Yes. Allow me to share exhibit A1, which is a colorized site plan exhibit with um, an aerial background of the existing conditions. Just to orientate the drawing, north is to the left. The site is known as Piscataway Auto Spa. It is lot 17, a block 8604 in the township of Scat, of Piscataway. It is point nine.
This is exhibit A1, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, the site is point nine five acres and is located in the general business zone.
Actually, can I talk to you one second, Mr. Murray? I, I'm sorry to do this, but this might help you, mister. This might actually avoid confusion later. I think we pre-marked the architecturals as A1 and A2. So Mr. Barlow, if we can mark this as A3, um, and we'll get to A1 and A2 in a moment. I apologize for the, for going back and forth.
No problem. So A3 is the colorized site plan. Prepared by Men, Menlo Engineering Associates, correct?
Correct. Okay. The site is located on the southeast corner of the intersection between International Avenue and Stilton Road, and access is provided off of Stilton Road. The surrounding areas include a restaurant to the north, single family homes to the east, an office building to the south, a retail plaza to the west, and the site encompasses an orthodontist's office to the northeast. As the site exists today, it is a 4,022 square foot car wash with 13 parking spaces. It also includes a facade sign and a freestanding sign. The applicant proposes a 480 square foot second floor addition of the car wash. The removal of one facade sign with the addition of three facade signs and the addition of two pay stations. Existing non-conformities include a parking count where 13 parking spaces exist today, where 26 is required. Existing freestanding sign setback where 13 feet is provided where 25 is the minimum for, uh, required. Existing free standing sign square footage where 32 square foot is the max and 33 exists today. And our final variance is three facade signs proposed where one is the maximum permitted. And that concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, if, uh, the board has any, oh, oh, I'm sorry. One quick direct question for you. Um, in terms of any of the comments in the CME report that refer to revisions of the engineering plan such as revising, um, tables or anything along those lines, we have no issue with complying with all of those requests. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, I have no further direct questions of Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Uh, members of the board, do you have any questions that you would like to ask of this witness? Thank you. Um, I will now open it up to the public. Ms. Buckley, would you check to see if anyone from the public would like to ask witnesses of this, I mean, questions of this witness?
No one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. Uh, if the board members have any questions, then, uh, you can call your final witness or your next witness.
Uh, yeah, two more, but we'll go quick. I have, uh, Mr. Brian Taylor, our architect is next. Murray, you can stop sharing your screen because I'm sure Brian will share his. And Mr. Taylor, I think you need to be sworn in.
Yes, um, I can't see him. Uh, uh, can you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Okay. Do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Brian Taylor.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, if you can please just briefly discuss your credentials and, uh, and if you've ever been in front of the, uh, Scataway Planning Board in the past.
Sure. Um, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I'm also licensed in six other states. I graduated from, uh, the New Jersey Institute of Technology School of Architecture. And my office is located in, um, in North Plainfield. I do not believe I've been before the Piscataway Planning Board. If it was, it was a while ago. I, I was, uh, last year in front of the zoning board in Piscataway, but I've testified in front of, um, many municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Um, he's acceptable to the board, testifies an expert.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Taylor, if you can, please, uh, tell us how it's going to look and if you can just focus on, uh, I guess those revisions that we made as part of, um, Henry's, um, comments.
Sure. So is this A1 or A2?
This is actually the originally submitted, uh, drawing. I want to just kind of show this first, and then I'm going to show A1 just to show the differences, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay. So, um, I'm, I'm presuming everybody can see my screen. So, um, as it was explained previously, there's a, uh, a small addition, um, which is a, a tower addition, which is, uh, going over, uh, near the entrance side of the car wash. And, um, previously we had, uh, three signs, uh, one on either side of the, on either side of the tower, on the entry side, and on the opposite side of that shown in the east and west elevation. And we had one, uh, sign on the awning, uh, which is, uh, facing Stilton Road, which is the bottom elevation. So the comment was that the, the signs were, um, a little bit large. Um, so what we did is we reduced the size of the signs. And, uh, right now I'm showing exhibit A1 with today's date. So the signs that you can see, um, on the middle of the screen on the, what, what we're calling the east elevation and the west elevation. Um, those signs were reduced from 67 square feet down to 40 square feet, uh, which is a, 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 a 40% reduction. Um, as well as the, the sign, the same size sign and same exact sign was on the Stilton Road elevation on the awning, um, in this area in the middle, that was removed. Um, and this is the slight little, uh, variation, I guess, that, um, Mr. Arch was speaking about. We removed that sign and then replaced it instead with a logo sign, which is, um, the car wash's logo, logo speedy shine. And that sign is, uh, I believe it's 55 square feet. So, um, it was really just kind of swapping out the, the, the block letter sign for the logo sign, which is actually uh, smaller than, uh, than the originally, um, scheduled sign. So we hope that these changes, you know, at least alleviate some of the concerns of the size of the signage, um, as it was reduced.
And Mr. Taylor, just in terms of the, uh, all of these are compliant in terms of size, in terms of percentage of the facade, correct, per the ordinance?
Yes, that's correct. So we have another drawing that actually gives, uh, the sign, um, the, the sizes, it's, 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 all of them are less than 10% uh, of the, of the facade.
Thank you. Uh, I have no other direct questions of Mr. Taylor.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of this witness? Hearing no response, I'd like to open it to the public. Ms. Buckley, would you check and see if, uh, anyone in the public would like to question this witness?
No one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. All right, Mr. Arch.
One final witness, that's Mr. John Dupont. He's our professional planner. John, if you can please put your camera on unmute and be ready to be sworn.
Ready.
Uh, Ms. Archer, I believe you're muted.
I think you're muted, Mr.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Okay. Um, do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name for the record as well as your professional address?
John Dupont, 756 Jackson Road, Stewartsville, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dupont, if you can briefly go over your credentials and, uh, um, and ask to be sworn in, or, uh, sorry, ask to be accepted.
So I've been a professional planner for approximately 20 years. Um, I've been to this board a while ago, um, through boards throughout the state. I've also served as a professional planner for the suburb car ref for the best about 20 years. Um, and all my licenses are in good standing.
Thank you. He may proceed and be testify as a planner, Ms. Mata.
Mr. Dupont, if you, uh, you're familiar with the site, if you can please just take us through, uh, the justifications for, uh, the relief we're asking.
Certainly will. So just to be, um, brief and indirect, as you heard, you have three existing violations. So parking, uh, required 26 spaces, existing 13. Uh, no change in that in this part up, as part of this application, we are going to however, stripe the lot. The freestanding side, uh, sign, the maximum size was 32 square feet. The existing sign is 33 square feet. Again, we're not changing the size of that sign. We're going to reface it, but not change the size. So that will stay. The freestanding sign, uh, setback from the right of way, minimum required is 25 feet. The current size is 13 feet. We are not going to change that either. So the new variance, which results from this application, is the number of permitted facade signs. As you just heard from the architect, uh, there was one facade sign existing on the Stilton roadside of the building that has been replaced by a logo sign on the proposed addition. And then there's also going to be two additional signs in the facade, uh, stating car wash. So having three facade signs is the reason for the variance. So I think that the board can grant the relief based on a C2 analysis. The applicant is a new purchaser of the property, proposing significant improvements to the building and the site. And although we do need new variances, this project will clearly advance several purposes of the MLU. And these purposes are, purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands within the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety and general welfare. The new science is modern and in a better location and more easily seen from Stilton Road. When someone typically brings their car for a car wash, it's not a planned trip. It's more of a, um, spur of the moment. Most of the time that decision is made is driven by the car wash. Therefore, the science is very important to the business and is also very important to safe access of the site by customers. With the new visible signs, it will give drivers plenty of time to make necessary maneuvers to enter the car wash for drivers in both directions on Stilton Road. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses uh, to meet the public needs of the citizens. This is a commercial site, which has existed for some time. The applicant is looking to make a significant investment in this site. Will modernize it, make it safer, make it more accessible and improve the commercial business. Purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design arrangements. The applicant is, is improving the aesthetics of the site by the building, uh, the construction of a building addition in order to provide improved visibility, new signage. The entire site has been landscaped and there's been improvements made to the traffic flow on the site. The applicant is clearly enhancing the site. With respect to negative criteria, I don't see any negative, negative impacts. The site is being completely revitalized. It will be easier and safer to use by customers. I can state that the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The benefits from the project will substantially outweigh any detriments. Town will be getting a modern aesthetically pleasing commercial business. The new building modifications and science will make the site much easier to identify and access. And certainly granting of the variance will not substantially impair the intent or purpose of your zone plan or zoning ordinance. In conclusion, I feel the board can grant the relief necessary, and I feel the project will be a significant benefit to the site and to the township. That does complete my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Uh, I have no further questions. Uh, I would ask of the board, Anthony.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of this, uh, witness? Hearing no response, I'm opening to the public. Uh, Ms. Buckley, would you check the public and see if anyone in the public would like to ask any questions of this witness?
No one, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Close to the public. Uh, Mr. Arch, um, if you'd like to make a conclusion, otherwise I can put it to the board for a question.
Uh, brief summation, um, uh, I think what we've shown here is that we're taking a, a site, uh, that is, uh, you know, an older site, a little bit rundown, and we're really breathing new life into it. Um, I don't think anything that is being requested here as, as is shown, um, is anything that would, uh, uh, cause a detriment to the town. And we've worked with the township professionals, we've worked with Henry, and, uh, I think that, uh, you can see that we were, uh, responsive to his comments and worked in conjunction with him to reduce the overall sizes of the signs and to, uh, and to reduce the redundancy of the sign and the excessiveness, uh, uh, of any signage there. And I think it really, um, uh, shows a, a very nice, modern, um, commercial business, uh, that's there. Uh, so, uh, I hope that you, uh, approve this, um, and thank you for your time.
Member, do I have, does anyone have a motion that they would like to make?
Madam, Madam Chair, if I may, I want to, sir, go ahead, Dawn. I'll let you go first. I just had a question. I'm looking at the plans about the sidewalk issue on International Avenue. Maybe John, Dawn, you can jump in.
You know, Tim, I was, um, I'm trying to look at an aerial. We don't have a, we don't have a, a survey. Um, can your client or your engineer confirm whether or not sidewalks do exist along International Avenue?
Uh, I am look, I see, I don't, I am looking at a Google map image. They do not appear, there does not appear to be sidewalks currently along International Avenue at that area.
That is what I'm seeing as well. So, um, the staff is going to make a recommendation that in, in fact, if they don't exist, that the applicant be required, um, to install them along the International Avenue frontage. Um, I'm looking also, you know, two doors down, we have a brand new dwelling. They had to put in the sidewalk. I mean, we're really trying to tie, install these tidies together so to make this a walkable area. Um.
Mayor Dawn, I, I, when I did a side visit a few weeks ago, I, I recall walking on grass, no, no sidewalks there.
Mr. Mendoza, uh, did you hear the request of the, uh, of, of the township? They're requesting that since there's no sidewalks along, uh, it doesn't mean that you're putting sidewalks in along the entirety of an international, just, uh, along the frontage, uh, of your property on International Avenue. Is that something that you would be agreeable to?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Uh, as an aside note, Mr. Arch, he may be able to work something out with the contractor that's going to be out there, um, with the, uh, the township. If not, he can have his own contractor, work with, uh, engineering, Mr. Herrera.
Well, we'll certainly be in contact with him. Uh, we have to for coordination anyway. So, uh, certainly appreciate any help the township can, can lend us.
And Tim, it won't, it won't delay your client's project. Um, he's, he's going to obviously have to bond for that improvement. So, um, um, you know, we'll work with you in in terms of getting those, getting it done.
Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, I'll take a motion.
Ma- Madam Chair, Dawn Corbin, I'll make a motion that we approve the application subject to the CME report, subject to the staff report um, with the additional condition that the applicant be required to install sidewalks along the International Avenue frontage.
Yeah, I have a second.
Carol Saunders, second.
Thank you, roll call, Ms. Buckley.
Mayor Waller.
Yes.
Ms. Corbin.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny. Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care, Tim.
Appreciate it.
I believe that completes our agenda for tonight. Um, our next site plan meeting will be on July twenty-sixth, and our next regular meeting will be on August the ninth.
We need
Do I hear a motion to adjourn, okay? Thank you, second.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, keep enjoying summer, okay, bye bye.